Opening the November 28th, 2023, Meeting of the Air Planning Board. Welcome, everybody. First item of business regards the agenda. Move to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye. So our first item is public, in public meetings, 71 Sandy Pond Road. And I believe we have a... Step up and introduce yourself, sir.
Sure. My name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates. And I'm presenting an approval not required plan at the intersection of Sandy Pond Road and Snake Hill Road.
Uh huh.
This approval not required plan creates two lots, each with the legal frontage and area. And it also creates a non-buildable parcel, parcel A. Parcel A is not a buildable lot because it doesn't have frontage on a public way. We're making that notation not only on the plan but in the notes section of the plan.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking for approval not required endorsement from the planning board tonight with the plan as submitted.
Okay. And all the dimensions fit for frontage and requirements?
Yes, I reviewed them and then, and all the buildable lots meet all of the A2 zoning requirements. Parcel A, as you stated, does not have frontage, so it does not.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Do my colleagues have questions?
Um, yes. Can you just give a little more detail of the detail? This is kind of unique to this drawing?
Um, sure. So we created an easement for utilities over lot number one for the benefit of lot number two. We did it in a detail just because they got too busy putting all the bearings and distances and the dimensions on the plan. So I just pulled it off to the side and just showed the bearings and distances for the easement in the detail. Just makes it a little bit easier for it to read. Attorneys get confused, so we try not to confuse them anymore than we have to. So it's just more of a detail of that. So if you look at lot number one, I show the utility easement C detail. So it's just an easement for lot two over lot number one.
And this will just allow utilities, there's not any right of access for lot two?
No, it's just for utilities, right. Lot one will get access through Sandy Pond Road and lot two will get it through Snake Hill.
Yep. And you'll meet whatever the requirements are? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go ahead.
You'll meet the requirements of the DPW for an easements for utilities of any sort?
Absolutely. Right, actually, we've been in contact with them through the Conservation Commission. We filed the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. An order of conditions was approved, it just hasn't been granted yet. So that's why the easement is there to allow utilities to cross over lot number one.
Great. Fantastic. And the other question is you're going for the ZBA?
That's correct.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jeff.
No, by all means, go ahead.
I mean, I know it's not germane to our decision, but I'm just kind of curious what Mr. Aho plans with these?
This isn't Mr. Aho.
This isn't? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was one is.
No.
Oh, I got confused. I'm sorry, what the applicant's intent is?
This is North Country Developers. Right now, he's just creating two lots.
That's it?
That's it.
So no plans for units at this point, you just?
Not at this time.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. What I was going to say was I want to express my gratitude towards the folks who have been working on this lot. I know it was a difficult lot. It went through some difficult estate issues. And you might want to convey to the people who have been working with the town over the last two years, probably two plus years at this point.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, everybody in town, I believe, knows his properties, so anything is better than what was there before.
That being said, I think also that it could have, the relationship between the town and the person who is doing the work on it could have gone in a very different direction. And I think everybody at the table realized that and worked together very hard to make it work properly.
Well, I appreciate all that, too. Now to make it...
I was chair when it started, that's why I wanted to say that.
Oh, it goes back that far?
It's gone back a long time.
See, I didn't know that.
It's not germane to our conversation now.
Interesting. Okay, great.
So I have nothing more, Mr. Chair.
No, I have nothing more, Nathan.
I'd like to make a motion then to endorse the A and R plan for 71 Sandy Pond Road as presented, plan dated 11/21/2023. I'm reading the...
Yep, out of the box.
The only date I could find that quickly. And I'm going to let it go that it's not...
Second, right?
You know, your note about it being a not buildable is fine.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you.
I second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of endorsing the A and R?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations.
We got it, man.
Thank you very much.
Oh, here, can I sign this now?
Yeah. I'll put it over here so that it could have gone very different direction.
See, I wasn't aware of any of the behind the scenes stuff, but I knew the point, I knew who we were doing it for.
Today is the 21E, yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
The town said if we don't, will you then, they said yes.
Okay. That's good.
Typical old air.
Good, I like that.
You don't always hit that, do you?
No.
Sometimes you stumble across it, sometimes you step right up.
Similar handwriting, it's like that. And I'm like, you just have Dr. handwriting, that's awesome.
I have Dr. handwriting but not a doctor's...
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
So when you get that recorded, can you just...
It'll take five minutes afterwards, I'll tell you what happened.
More, more, send this fine copy like that and do it.
Yep.
And since, can someone, three members constitute a majority on this?
I'm sorry?
Because it's a five-member board, right?
Yes.
So if someone can just write, three members constitute a majority?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, and I know with the, at the registry of deeds.
If you put it there, that'd be great.
And it's one of those magical pandemic happenings.
Three members constitute a majority.
This is that crazy space across from the beach, right?
Yeah.
With all the stuff that had to be cleared out and not...
The gentleman who lived there was, uh, had mobility issues. And he was aging out. And the house was set for him. The property supported his lifestyle.
Of course, sure.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. So we're in the middle of a public hearing right now, so we don't need to open it?
Correct.
Okay, so 42 Park Street, come on up. And you know the drill, if you would introduce it, name and address and say hello.
Or name and project, yeah.
Name and project. Name and project.
The address won't make any difference to us.
Good evening.
Justin, sorry.
Oh, Ally Goldenak.
Welcome, Ally, welcome, Jess. And this is, of course, regarding 42 Park Street, so...
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
What's the modus operandi here?
Let me... All right, so Justin and Ally have submitted revised comments, or revised plans, site plans and architectural plans, as well as responses to all the comments. After receiving their submission, I felt that we were close enough to a point where I could start working on a draft decision. That has been sent over to the applicant and to the engineer. They reviewed it. They did provide one amendment to the draft decision.
Okay.
And it was on condition number 31. They just wanted to add if applicable prior to the rest of the sentence.
And your feeling on that?
I was, I was fine with that amendment.
Jeff and Nathan?
I'm going to take a look at it quickly.
Okay, thank you.
And so that condition...
Here, page...
So it's condition 31.
Number seven, page seven, condition 31?
Yeah.
So if I may ask a question, Mr. Chair, just to make sure that we all understand it the way I understand it. So we're not sure at this point that you're going to need a NIPD's permit for this property? Is that what this says?
So based on total area, we're under an acre, so we don't trigger the SWIP. The town has local regulations that require stormwater management. So I just requested the if applicable, because if you look back at condition 19, it states if applicable a NIPD's permit. So just to be consistent between the two conditions.
That sounds reasonable.
No, I have no, I have no trouble with that. I just wanted to make the clarity is, yes, I understand we have a tougher setup than before. But we also got the guy in town that every other town looks to in Massachussetts, so...
Which is fine.
Good job. They found the guy in charge.
What guy is that?
Their DPW's Storm Water Management guy, he's good.
And as I explained to Justin on that, the main, on that condition, so I know they don't trigger the NIPD's permit, so they don't have a SWIP, but under our stormwater management bylaw, we still require inspections. And that's...
And that's totally acceptable and fine.
Yes. And you, and you want them. You want them to find it in the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so you know.
Not the after, in fact.
It seems like it's crazy, but at the end of the day, you don't have to pull it all apart and redo it.
That's good.
And the only other thing, so I just wanted to raise, speaking with Ken, one of our board members, he raised one comment that he had. So, on the site plan, as you see here, you have this concrete walk, and then you have a concrete walkway here, and there's just grading in between. There's no connection point, right?
Yes.
When you actually look at your elevations, if you look at here, so this portion extends past the building, which is where...
It's out onto that gray, that white area.
Yes, it goes out to here, so there's no actual connection to that. And so what he wanted to understand was how, what is this point right here actually do? Is this going to wrap around that portion and then connect to the concrete walkway? Or is there just a miscommunication on the architectural rendering versus the plans?
It might be a miscommunication, but I can verify with the architect, I don't see any reason that if it did extend, that the grading, if you want to scroll down one page, just so we... So right now, where all that grading comes in to the side there, there's no reason that it wouldn't be able to do that still. It would just be an additional bump out, so you'd have some, some of the exposed, where that wraparound is that he shows on the elevation.
Yeah.
It would just be exposed. But we can confirm with the architect on that, and as part of the building permit process, that could get addressed.
It almost makes sense to be a wraparound walkway, is really what it comes down to.
At least for that portion, the reason the two walkways aren't connected was the grade difference between them.
Yeah, I understand.
So, but...
Yeah, because that wraparound connects to that, the storage, the three, you know, these three storages right here. So that's, that's why I wanted to raise it.
Yeah, so I can follow up with the architect and the more and just, even if I just send you an email to clarify that.
Yeah, if you could. And then, so I think what we can do is just, we could probably just condition, if we get to that point, condition that, you know, revise plans.
Yeah, revise, set of plans could be provided.
Yeah. And one thing I wanted, I do want to add is if you can add a signature block for the planning board on it as well?
Yes.
Because I'd like the planning board members to sign the final copy.
Yep.
That way, everyone knows which plan sets we're working off of. There's no confusion.
Perfect.
You did speak to Ken today, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Did he mention that?
No, he did not.
Wow.
Something I did in Salisbury.
Usually he does, and he also wants the date.
Go ahead.
What date would the board prefer?
So you're, you can, so in the decision, I actually left that portion of it blank.
Yep.
There's a section under condition number... Let me just check. Condition 15, so the lastly revised plans dated, and I left that blank.
Okay.
So that when you do, you can submit those final plans with that date, and that way I can fill it in and then have the...
Chair.
Perfect, okay, great. Now, do we want to discuss the issue with the three of us here and the vote and everything?
Yes.
So as you can see, we're down two members, so, and approval requires a majority vote only, three of five. So we want to give you the opportunity to choose, like, we can do a vote tonight, because we can, by law, we can, we have three. It's just a risk. Now, we can mitigate that risk, I can do an informal kind of straw poll and say, well, kind of where are you leaning? And then you can make it, come back to, you can say to us right here at the table, no, we prefer you wait a meeting, or yes, go for it. So I will say, I'm ready. I'm good. Jeff, Nathan?
I would just like to walk through the responses that the departments, make sure they're all in...
Yeah, and I'm happy to answer any and all questions, comments.
This is a straw, just to get a kind of leaning, yep, so we'll do that.
Yep.
And Jeff?
I think this is an important priority, though, should go ahead.
So I think you have a sense, may we...
Now, this is what's happening. If you don't get all three yeses, you have to wait two years to come back to us, or three years. So this is, again, a good thing for you. Okay? Is that pretty well put?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Take a deep breath, Ally.
You're good.
You're good. You guys are good, we can go ahead.
We do things that are mysterious, and I recognize that. And then what Nathan wants to go through?
I would like to go through.
Yeah, we will.
Yep.
We will.
And I'll do that for you guys as well, just so you guys know what really changed between...
I just, I just wanted you to have a sense and the opportunity to, you know, to assert control. Okay, good. All right, so we want to work off the McCarty engineering document that you prepared?
Yep.
Yes, and I just want to make sure the one dated November 20th?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. So from the town planner, comment one?
Fixed, all right.
You want me to read these?
No.
Or just kind of...
No, you don't have to read them in full.
Jump right through.
Just jump right through.
Okay.
Please.
So we had miscommunication between the plans, that's been addressed. Concrete walkway has been revised.
Plan number two?
Yep.
We have a video that's keeping track, so number three, thank you.
So number three, the bike rack location's been altered. It's shown the front as on site plan.
Okay, good.
Number four, the lighting regarding the foot candles at the property line, line plan's been revised and updated accordingly.
Thank you.
Comment five was detailed, the proposed gate, proposed gate's been provided on a detail sheet. Comment six, height, color, proposed dumpster enclosure. On the layout materials plan, we call it out as a six-foot-high white vinyl fence, standard that you see in areas.
Yep.
Comment seven, regarding the buffer strip along the southern property line, so... Danny, get to the architectural. So the buffer strip's been revised to be up to the berm, and the grading plan has been revised accordingly to provide a five-foot strip off the back of curb and then graded down to the site.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number eight, the existing tree line's been revised accordingly down there.
Oh, okay, good.
From the conservation agent regarding the plantings, she wanted to see more native species, the landscape architects revised that as well. The air disabilities commission, and I'm going to lump this with one of the comments from the economic and community development, was regarding the ADA access. So we did provide a detail sheet on sheet number six. So that little window, oop, right there, yes. So this details the ADA compliance. So we meet the slopes within the ADA parking spaces. And where we have the hatch area, we show that we have seven feet from the first handicap space to the building, so with the doors closed, you have the adequate room to swing out. And then we show eight feet at the van space.
Thank you.
So, oh, I get it now.
So the modification from the previous plan set, those three spaces were shifted up a little bit. What we did was we shifted them down, so that way the van accessible space had the required clearance.
Yeah, because you know what? I'm glad you clarified that, because what I was concerned about here was the distance between the edge of the lot and the, and the open door.
Yeah.
And what I understand is that's not a problem, where it would be a problem, you're moving the van space over here.
Yes.
There are no doors to get in.
So the elevator for the chair has room for the elevator?
God, that's what I was worried about. That's all taken care of. Good.
And then the other comment was regarding the steep slope. So you'll see a thick dash line there in a leader pointing, it states limit of ADA, all slopes less than 2% within the ADA spaces. So once you're outside the limit of those spaces, you can have your standard grades within...
So it's going to come out at a lower grade and then drop away?
And then drops away.
This is a very technical drawing.
And I just wanted you guys to see that at the corner where that 22437 is, it's about 5% going away to that nearest contour.
Is that going to mess up? And I'm sorry to jump in, but if I recall our conversation two meetings ago, you had all water moving to the back of the property?
So it's still all, I maintain that drainage path as...
Thank you.
As the last plan, and actually, by shifting these parking spaces closer to the front of the site, we were able to stretch out that landscaped area. So the grade's actually a little bit less coming down to that parking lot now.
Thank you.
Where before, we were pushing at 10%, now we're less than that.
We still end up with, we still end up with a predominance of the water on the property along the back of it, but we discussed that before.
Yes, and now it's at less percent, so you have less of it gushing that way.
Thank you.
So that takes care of, as I said, the air disabilities commission, as well as comment one from the economic and community development. Comment two from economic and community development was pertaining to the 21E. My applicant's not bound to have one done at this time, she's chosen not to. There are mechanisms in place within the legality of the 21E that if the contractor does come upon dirty dirt, which we hope that never happens, there's steps in place to mitigate that, maintain it, control it, and dispose of it properly. So that, in my applicant, yes, and my applicant fully understands the risks that comes with that.
And I just, you know, just for the record, the board obviously recommends doing the 21E, but we acknowledge that it's not legal, you're not legally bound to do it, and you in return have acknowledged that we've recommended it, and you said, we appreciate it, but we're not going to do it at this point. Is that a fair summation for everybody? Okay, good.
Yep. And the one thing from the previous comment letter dated November 6, I just want to make mention to you guys was test pits were done.
Oh.
The engineering department was okay with us being out there by ourselves to log them. We submitted that whiff of revised drainage report to them. The only change to the drainage was the type of structures underground.
Okay.
So the systems, and, so if you look, yep, that one works. So if you look at those, they're a little bit longer and a little bit skinnier than what was on the plan before. So those are what we call the stormtack 310 systems. So the ones originally were 740s. They were a little bit fatter, a little bit taller in height. Based on depth of groundwater, we had to make the system a little bit shallower. So system got a little bit shorter, we had to add a few more chambers. But again, we still meet pre-post, we still meet the TSS, so our quality. Nothing in the report changed other than a couple numbers in the type of system.
So to tie a bow on it, you did your test pits, you submitted it to DPW, DPW came back and said, we don't think the solution you have in place is going to work. And you come up with a solution that works and they're happy with.
So they didn't even come back and said you didn't have a solution that works. We saw that we weren't going to be able to make this work adequately, so we just went forward, redesigned it, resubmitted it, and to my knowledge, DPW had no comment regarding...
Being proactive helps.
Exactly. And I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Good.
Thank you.
Did, did Mr. Diskin pick up on that?
Actually, not that I know of. Okay. I'll enjoy that conversation with him tomorrow.
Did DPW approve this drawing?
They, they were sent the drawing, they have reviewed it, they didn't provide any final comments, because they had already addressed all the others.
Okay.
And I did reach out to Matt, and I reached out to all the department heads, not last week, the week before that, just to make sure, again, I was like, this is the final point, we need to see if there's any revisions, and they were all set.
Okay. So the, the moron drainage, it's all going to do the same thing, right? It's going to come around and go to the, the bottom right side?
Yep, so where the two catch basins are, same as the last time we were here, drainage is still doing the same thing, still going to the catch basin, still going to the water quality unit before. The only thing that changed was that system underground, which, which you won't see. It's still outletting to the same spot. The invert of the flared end section there changed by hundredths, so nothing that you're going to notice on site, even if you take a laser to it. So I, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that if you look at that previous plan, that system looks a little different. But it's in the same, pretty close to the same footprint as the original one. We're still avoiding the utilities as we can. The only other thing, the other two things I can add is, we did submit to ZBA for a special permit for the 35 square feet. I counted it out, it's 35 square feet.
Okay.
Within that little triangle right there.
So that's up to ZBA?
Yep. ZBA requires, in the local regs, they require a special permit for that.
Yeah, because it's not, it's, it's already an existing non-conformity, and they're not making it more non-conforming, they're just building within a setback, so it's a special permit, not a variance.
Yeah, I remember there was a hole in the cheese block at that point last time, and this is still unresolved, but you have a strategy.
Yeah, we're submitted, Samantha's received everything, so I believe we should be scheduled for...
December 20th.
Yes. And then regarding conservation, the surveyor, the surveyor did go out, locate soil, sent that to me, I just need to put it in CAD, put a plan together to send to you, and then you and I can be in discussion on how to go forward.
All right.
I believe those were the two open-ended things. And I know in the conditions of approval, it does state a special permit from ZBA and the other DPA from, so.
More on the drainage. There was a comment last time about the roof drains all connecting in on this...
Yes.
South side, is that...
So the roof drain system did not change, you still have the one there that Danny's pointing to that comes down, and then...
The north side of the building.
On the north side, and then on the south side, we still had the other one, just based on the roof lines, that we can't get everything one way or the other, so we did have to split up on both sides of the building.
Any further questions, Nathan, Jeff?
I have a feeling, I don't have a question, I have a statement to make. It seems to me that the applicant went away, took our comments to heart, worked well with Danny and the town's departments. I recognize that there are things that are not yet complete, it is not out of our purview to approve plans without contingent upon. I think they've taken care of everything that's within our purview, Mr. Chair, to be honest.
Excellent. Danny, would you be so good to walk us through all the motions that we need to go through?
Yes, actually. So I actually did set it up perfectly for you. It's on here.
So the first one.
Imagine, all this name just means.
First thing I need, I need a motion to close the public hearing for 42 Park Street.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before you do that, may I ask to take another straw poll now that the comments have been addressed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm good.
Nothing has come, that's changed my mind.
I just want to see the elevation.
So that was when you get the kid in the mouth.
So this is the front elevation.
Yep. This is.
Rear.
Yep, if you're looking at, from the parking lot to those, to the back of the building.
Park Street.
Yep.
South view.
And then this is on the side along the driveway. And this is, and this is on the north side. This is along the other side, between the buildings.
Yep, that's between the buildings, and to one above it is if you're standing in the ADA spaces, looking at the building. And I would like to remind the board that these plans will be submitted to building department as part of the bill and permit process. And any issues, comments, concerns will be addressed prior to the issuance of the bill and permit.
Building department still has an opportunity to weigh in.
Yes.
Yes. Can you scroll down, please? I want to see the street elevation.
Oh, the street elevation?
The first one, I believe. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks good.
Good. Did, did you answer the, did you give them, did you give Justin and Ali a response?
I think it's, I think it's a good project. I think the, I think we should support it.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So first, I, I need a motion to close the public hearing for 42 Park.
Move to close the public hearing for 42?
I'm sorry.
Is there any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just. Well, I did.
That was going. Good catch.
That's a great catch.
I'd like to open it for public comment. All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
No, it's the right thing. It is absolutely the right thing.
Yes, yes. Great catch.
Move to close the public hearing for 42 Park Street, map 26 parcel 17, site plan review and minor stormwater management permit. Applicant Ally Goldenak continued, I'm going to read the whole thing, from 10:2423 and 11:1423. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. So the second motion is the actual approval of the site plan. I'm going to, I can make a motion as well.
Yes, of course you can.
So I move that for approval of the site plan pursuant to section 320 hyphen 3 dot 5, site plan reviewer, Arizona bylaw, subject to the general conditions numbered one to thirty through thirty-five in this decision and the following conditions if any presented at the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to, if I may, I believe you meant to say subsection 320 dash 3 dot 5.
That's what I meant. I accept that amendment. Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Site plan is approved. Third, in the third one, I need a motion for the approval of the minor stormwater management.
Move to approve the minor stormwater management permit pursuant to subsection 245 dash 5, subject to the general conditions numbered one through thirty-five in this decision and the following conditions if any presented at the meeting.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Very excited to see this change on Park Street. Congratulations.
Welcome to here.
Congratulations. Danny, I'll be in touch regarding. You get me those revised.
Our next meeting is December.
Thirteen?
Yeah, twelve. It's a weird day.
December twelfth.
December twelfth?
Yes. Hold on, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah. December twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah. We're Tuesday, they're Thursday.
Oh, nice and easy.
All right, take care now. All righty. Project updates. Do we have anything?
Uh, just a couple of updates. So Stratton Hill, I had a Zoom meeting with the applicant's engineer, Matt Hernan, and as well as Green International, to discuss, just to review the, the plan that they have, timing on getting engineered plans, and when they, as well as the, how long the peer review will take to get to those plan, through those.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is the proposed new layout.
Correct.
All below the lines.
That is correct.
Thank you. Just to be clear what we're talking about.
Got it. So we, we met and we have a updated, you know, estimated time due to the holidays, you know, December. They think it would be best to get it out to move from the ninth to the 23rd.
Of December?
Of, of January.
January, thank you.
Um, they'll make that motion. I mean, they'll, they'll continue it when we get to that point, but that way it gives, you know, Dillison Roy enough time to get the, the plans fully engineered and get them over to Green to be able to get their peer review done.
We have all the necessary extensions, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, 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 we do. And so Green International, they also reviewed the peer review proposal that they'd given us for the costs. And based on what they had in there, they can reallocate some of the numbers to be able to still conduct the full peer review under the same amount.
Oh, good.
So they won't have to.
I think that's just, that's very just.
Yes.
Good. I'm glad to hear it.
So, we're getting there. And then, uh, let's see, so Stratton Hill, that's, that's where we're at with Stratton Hill. So they'll be back in January 23rd. Moving forward, the town will be pushing to a hybrid meetings going forward.
Really?
Yes. So I, I know that, I actually had a meeting today with Robert, and they're going to be having all the boards try to get to a hybrid point, and.
Could you clarify, when you say hybrid, does that, does that mean that it's accessible to the public via Zoom? Or that some of the board members themselves could ostensibly?
So, yes, yes. So, so what is going to happen is it's going to be hybrid in the sense of it's going to allow the public to be able to be on Zoom and participate through Zoom if they want to participate. And it also helps if the board members who are, can't be in, say they're out of state and they still want to participate, they can.
Like I did in Washington.
Exactly. And so what'll happen is they'll all, going forward, there'll be a set Zoom link for every meeting. I will post it on the website so that it's easy to find. I'll, we'll have them going forward. People can just click and just get right into it.
And this is all kosher with the Attorney General?
This is, yes, yes, because they've extended that until 2025, I believe. So, where, I know that all the other boards are going to be making that move as well. And I think it's great because I think it helps, it allows the neighbors, residents to want to participate but can't be here or don't want to be in person, they can still participate through Zoom, they can still watch it. The difference between just watching it on TV and Zoom is the participation portion.
And I'm going to make a comment. It allows the boards, so right now, you have every other Tuesday, planning board, it's sacred. The other Tuesdays are select board, sacred. Conservation is second, is. Second and fourth Thursday, sacred. FinCom's looking for a place. All the other boards of committees that have to meet are constantly, housing trust looking for a place, housing company looking for a place, bringing in volunteers to be on committees, not six people or seven people or five people can sync up their schedules to get to a meeting physically. So I think it's going to help with the volunteer participation in town for, for committees. And it's worked really well through the pandemic, and I think the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is beginning to recognize that. Town meeting probably won't go here, and that's a very different animal.
I think that's a totally different animal.
That's a very different animal. So, so, but that's, but I'm actually very encouraged.
I know, I don't want to take up too much of it, but I, I, I do need to think about how we manage public input and comments with the Zoom hybrid.
Yes, so.
Comment, Nathan?
Along that line, I recommend that each chair of each board or of the town provide some kind of a template.
Really? I think so.
So that because with the meeting law, the boards are allowed to put some rules around comment. So I think that that would be necessary.
Yeah, so when it comes to comment, remember, the, the board itself has the ability to set the parameters as to how. They can set how much time each person can talk, you know, and they can make, they have to just make sure that we're not stopping them from, from speaking, but we can, you know, set time limits, you can set, you can say that, you know, don't repeat anything that's already.
I'm not asking to get into the specifics tonight. I just recommend boards have something.
Yes. It's very manageable. So in Salisbury, I did, we were hybrid the entire time I was there. And people, when you participate, you know, just to raise hand after you've gone through the public here, you look, is there anyone who wants to speak? If they raise their hand, then they can speak. It's, so it's pretty, it's pretty simple, but I will talk with them.
But I do think.
I think it's a good idea.
Some boundaries and rule practices that are going, that are, that are, that participants can somehow, they'll need to be aware. There's, you know, the, the open meeting speech will be available, but there are going to be constraints to it. I would expect that, and I would recommend that the boards have something in place.
All right. And I like the idea, though, at least some consistency among the boards. That's why a document from above that applies to all, would be helpful in saying, okay, these are the rules and the expectations. Okay, good. Any other project status updates?
Trying to think if there was any other projects or status updates. As of right now, no. I know, well, I know we will be anticipating another site plan review application from GPR. I don't know exactly what the project is yet, but they're on the, they're in the process of working on that. We're still waiting on the National Grid substation. They have not submitted to us yet, so they're working on that.
The one on Park Street?
Yes, the one right on.
Because we, there was one recently, but this is another one.
Yeah, this is the one right on.
So if you have been watching what's going on with the, I know you have been, Commonwealth of Massachusetts believes that we will be at 175% of our current grid need by 2035. And that includes electrification of the commuter rails. That's, that's on the, that's on the governor's to-do list right now. The first stages for electrification, planning and design. So, yeah, no, it's, there's a big push for electricity. There's a big push on renewables for electricity just because of the carbon footprint of current, of other sources.
You can argue about squeezing the balloon, but.
No.
There we go.
I'm just, that's what's going on.
I hear you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I see our lines going across down that have just been upgraded, probably being upgraded again in a lifetime.
Sure they will be.
Yeah.
For the minutes approval, we're, we're good with three, right?
Yes.
Okay, right, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anyone off. Project stats, we're done with that. So October 10th, 2023.
I'm pulling them out. Move to approve.
These are the ones with my edits? Thank you.
Move to approve the October 10th, 2023 air planning board minutes.
I second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Move to approve November 14th, 2023 air planning board meeting minutes.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Good night, everyone, and I hope you had a happy Thanksgiving.
Aye.